All right, it is 5:30. We will get started with the regular city council meeting for today, Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that all members of our city council are present this evening. And Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or I'm sorry, approve the agenda as written. We have no additions or deletions at this time to the agenda. We have a motion by Councilor Bower. Do we have a second? Second, we have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. First, before you, we have the minutes from August 9th. That is a committee of the whole. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the minutes of our last city council meeting, which was August 16th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second? Excuse me.
Second.
Second. We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution to pay our transfers and claims. If you look at that, our transfers are to the general fund in the amount of $623.36, and that's coming from the lodging tax fund, the A-12. Counts payable, we have City of International Police Claims of $2,709,833.26. Airport Commission Claims of $35,437.3. Airport Capital Project Claims of $2,745,334.39. And Airport Cash Flow Claims of $340,340. For a total of accounts payable and claims of $5,830,944.68. Chair would entertain a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bower. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Can we just make it abundantly clear that the airport is just a pass-through? And we are not paying that. We will get that money back. So it's not as dire as it looks.
And to your point, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, city administrator, that 2.7 million, even if we were paying it, we're the fiscal agent for the county as well. So we make the payment, and half of it is money that the county has already put in. So not only are we not paying 2.7, we're getting all of it back in projects. Well, a vast majority of it in projects, but half of that dollar amount is the county's share of the money as well. So very, very good point, because those numbers do get rather high from time to time. But on the upside, in our payments and claims, I mean, we did have a check just for 1 million in there for part of the project. So and it wasn't even a couple of weeks ago, we got a million something back to the city being reimbursed. So I mean, it is literally a pass-through, but last year's budget, one of the biggest concerns that we had going into this year was how do we fund upfront, keep our cash flow going before we get reimbursed? So definitely still a concern when you're dealing with such large numbers. All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Chair, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the audience for open forum. If there's anybody that would like to address the council at this time. Hearing none, you do have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. We'll go to our public hearing. Earlier this afternoon, actually just before this meeting, we did have a public hearing in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. They are looking at changing some of the sections. This would be the first reading of the fifth series to amend the Home Rule Charter in the sections 59, 74, 79, and 125. And that would be effective 90 days after the second publication, which cannot happen until we have the second reading. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion for the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bower. Any discussion? It was handled pretty well at the public hearing, but I do want to give a huge kudos. And sometimes we just say that. I want to thank you to the people that made this possible. But the reality is that we have a group of people that really have stepped up and have, and I mentioned this at the public hearing, by charter, they only have to meet once every six months or once every year. This group has met once a month and walked through our entire charter and taken input from city staff, employees, and, you know, elected officials on how we can do, how we can be a better community in the future and what really ties our hands in regards to being able to, you know, complete public service and be able to fix our roads and be able to have the language correct, make sure that we have the positions in the city that we need according to the city charter. So to the men and women that have been doing this month in, month out for legitimately the last two years, I want to give them a huge round of applause, and that isn't just trying to be nice. It's really trying to thank those that have really done this. These are not elected officials, and these are not city employees. These are residents that have stepped up to do a civic duty, no different than voting or anything else. I mean, really, really quality people that have been able to step up to do this for the city, and I really do appreciate it. I won't say anymore. So we have a motion and a second for the first reading of the ordinance to amend the Home Rule Charter. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to new business. We have a mayoral proclamation declaring the National Rail Safety Week, September 20th through 26th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to have that mayoral proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Consider hiring Costin Group Incorporated for Government Relations Services for the Cary Park Revitalization Project. I'll ask the city administrator just to give a brief background before I try to give my thoughts on it.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The mayor and I and Public Works Director Boca had previously met with this group. We actually met with Kraus Anderson in Woodseth as well, and they hooked us up with this group to talk with us in regards to helping us lobby for funding for this project and work on getting the most of the funding we can, any grants available, and help with those items. They've done a number of projects. They are currently working on a couple of projects very similar to ours, and they're very excited about helping us, you know, do what they can to get as much funding and assistance that we available out there.
And just to follow up with the city administrator on this specifically, this was a recommendation from Kraus Anderson, and the reason for it is, as we all know, funding is going to be incredibly difficult, and if we're going to look for funding from state bonding, we need to have somebody in on our case down in St. Paul. I have been in communication with Representative Eklund, and he truly believes there is an opportunity for us to be able to get this passed or get some state funding. If we get any state funding, which is what this group would be lobbying for, that opens up the door for us to get federal funding as well. We do know that there's a lot of additional funding that's out there from the federal side. We have an advantage, as it turns out, and this group was very, very clear of what our advantages and our disadvantages are on this project. They said that based on the fact that we're looking to do a community project that will be a multi-use or multi-generational use facility with both daycare and a potential senior center there, being able to bring in a community center where people can utilize a kitchen, a gymnasium, walking track. All of those things are a huge advantage. Another huge advantage is that we have at least one group in our community, if not two, that are ready to buy into the project by raising funds or putting in matching funds for any state funding to move forward. The interesting part about that is we do know that we already have some funding through Rotary for the Splash Park. Obviously, we have had a quick conversation with Land Use and Legislation with Rec Hockey, who has some concerns moving forward with being closed, but big picture, they are excited to have a date that they could start figuring out what funds they have. So we're ready to start bringing them in too. Now, the downside of this is, and I think this is going to be one thing that we have to really, really be aware of as a city council and as a community, this is not a hockey project. This is not an arena project. If this gets billed in any capacity to the state, the chances of being funded for an arena project is dang near zero. But if we can build this as a community center and we're revitalizing something that we already have, and we are going to add amenities which will be more conducive to both aging population and to a younger generation to utilize the same services, that really opens up the door to additional funding. So they have laid it out pretty clear. They haven't just given us all the smell-good and roses that this is going to be an easy process, but they also have said pretty clearly what we have to do to move this project forward. I was apprehensive at first. In the time that I've been on city council, we have only had one lobbyist ever, and that was flattery and hood for some work that they were doing with Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I never had a good feeling or a bad feeling about them, but I have some weird stigma in my heart against lobbyists. It just doesn't seem right that someone would be arguing on our behalf. However, if we don't have somebody at the state arguing on our behalf and explaining to them the story of why this is important with us getting two new hotels into our community, and those two new hotels are going to be an opportunity to bring in new tournaments to our community, which is going to bring in more money to the restaurants, to the shops, and everything else. It really, it makes a compelling story of the community on the border that is starting to rejuvenate itself. We need someone to tell that story at the state, and obviously, myself and the city administrator and, you know, members of our council, we're telling that story here. And I think our community is really seeing the change in what we've done. But if we don't have someone at the state legislature to have that conversation, we're really not going to be able to move this project forward much past. There's a lot of people in our community that wants to do it. Before I open up comment, do you have anything else to add?
That wraps it up.
Okay, so at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to hire the Costin Group for Governmental Relations for Services for Cary Park Revitalization Project.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bower. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mayor, please.
Now, with our budget deficit, as we talked about it at our last special meeting, I'm against spending any major money. $30,000 is major money, and you have good points, so your points are excellent. But if we're looking at a high percentage, 27%, 28%, and we're going to divide this into taxes for people, I can't see spending excess money anywhere. And we have several other items coming up on today's agenda that I'm going to vote against also. Until we get this budget straightened out, I can't see we should be spending money. I think we're not doing the people right, even though it's a good project. It's an excellent project. But should we be raising their taxes because we're in deficit spending or will be in deficit spending? I say no.
I appreciate your thoughts.
I feel the same way.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Move.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries three for the motion, two against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, consider a recommendation to hire a part-time patrol officer. Chief Koshick.
Mayor, council members, thanks for letting me speak. I don't have much to say on this. Just wanted to let you guys know that I'm excited to announce that we have one part-time officer up today. We have several of them, so they're hopefully coming down the line. I've spoken at length about our efforts for retention as far as recruitment. I'm excited to tell you that even though numbers are down in the state of Minnesota as far as law enforcement numbers and they've built it higher, our community has been able to keep our roster full, which is nearly unheard of in the cities across Minnesota. I wanted to let you guys know, I feel that in no small part, this is because of our community and how welcoming they've all been towards the police officers, which again, we've seen hasn't always been the case. So I just want to use this forum to let you guys know that we really appreciate everyone's support for everything that we do, and we hope this will continue. All of our hires in the past, I think the past four have all been from out of the area. So we were struggling with locals maybe pursuing law enforcement careers. The community has been lucky enough to welcome these people coming from different areas as far as southern Minnesota into this community, Joshua Belayo being just another example of that. Joshua is currently working full-time up in the Cooch County Jail. Fantastic individual. As you know, we work really closely with the jail, and we're lucky enough to take an employee there who's now working with us. In all seriousness, though, he expressed his desire to pursue a law enforcement career, and we were lucky to have him. I just wanted to thank everyone for being supportive of law enforcement.
Thank you.
You do.
So is this, is this our new hire here?
This is Joshua.
Josh, very nice to meet you. Look forward to having you on our team. Thank you. All right. So at this time, at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to hire, I'm sorry, what's the name?
Joshua Belayo.
Yep.
Josh.
Josh. Chair would entertain a motion to hire a part-time patrol officer, Josh, who has a last name?
Belayo.
Belayo. Thank you.
So moved.
No disrespect there. I just, I don't want to ax it, so I would really like to just go that route. We have a motion from Councilor Kraus. We have a second by Councilor Bower. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Once again, it's a money issue. I support our law enforcement 100%. We have a great law enforcement, but once again, it's a money issue. If I am voting against a $30,000 program that we just talked about, I cannot vote for a part-time police officer. I don't know what he's going to make with going to include benefits and everything else. But once again, it's a money issue. I cannot hire anybody when we're in deficit spending.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
It's in the budget.
That's fine if it's in the budget, but does meaning have to spend it? I mean, I've got money in my budget too. Am I going to go blow it because I have it? I mean, we're in deficit. Why are we going to spend money? Put it off to the side and use it as we need it.
So just, I appreciate your concern, and I do hear what you're saying. And I guess my question would be, in the event that we were not to hire a part-time patrol officer, how would that affect your department?
Right now, we have one part-time patrol officer. We have one that's leaving for St. Louis County in the next few weeks, leaving us with one who is available on a limited basis. As you know, we've had a lot of hires recently, promotions. Generally, we operate with three to four part-time officers who fill vacations, sick leave. In the event that we didn't hire one, we would have to revert to offering overtime, which would be obviously more money for that, in the event they even took it. And another issue we're facing with our officers, as you can all appreciate, is that with COVID, they weren't taking vacation. They have it banked up. We all know what it was like to be cooped up for that long. And they want to take their vacation. Now, in the event we didn't hire someone, we're in the face of paying overtime if they'll take it or otherwise denying vacation and sick leave, which I don't, I don't feel comfortable with.
Mayor.
Yes.
I understand the concern, but I think we should put this off until we get this budget hammered out. We can spend money left and right all day long, and we're struggling in deficit spending, and we're passing that on to our taxpayers, as we talked about before, whether it's in last year's budget or coming up for the future budget. It's still money being spent.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? We have a motion and a second.
I'm going to vote for this one. I am. I'm going to give a yes on it, so. I'm watching the money thing too. I'm concerned, but I think this is an important one, so I'll vote yes for it.
Okay, and I don't have it on my notes. Do we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, correct?
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four for the motion and one against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we, welcome aboard. Next, we have a resolution for the PERA Declaration for Part-Time Patrol Officer. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a a resolution approving an application for a permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on sale liquor license for VFW Club, the VFW Club Peter Graham 2948, for the Veteran Service Office Oktoberfest Celebration, Friday, October 22nd, at Bob Wall's Memorial Union Hall.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bower. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to Land Use and Legislation Committee Recommendation. Approve the 2020 Annulatory Renewal for Life Insurance and Long-Term Disability Insurance. Chair would entertain a motion. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, Public Works Committee Recommendations. Allow necessary expenses for the Director of Public Works and the Public Works Supervisor to expend the, attend the MinDOT Fall Equipment Expo in St. Cloud, October 6th and 7th.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bower. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, adopt a resolution declaring adequacy of petition and ordering preparation of a feasibility study for the Batunus paving of 9th Avenue East between 19th Street East and 20th Street East.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bower. Any discussion? Just for everyone's knowledge on this one, this was a fully signed petition of the people that live on that road. We will be ordering a feasibility study, which will come up with the dollar amount so that we can then know the assessment that would go back to the property owners. This is the first time we've had a petition since we have the assessment policy in place. So this is actually a pretty unique thing. We've had petitions in the past which were not 100% and we moved forward without an assessment policy. So this is a big step moving forward for our community, so please.
Are we going to include 20th Street feasibility on that one too or not?
I believe so, and that's how I was reading it. And 20th.
Between.
Between, not including.
Were we going to do 20th Street?
I believe we were.
Feasibility study, yeah.
Yes. Betty, that was your understanding, or was that your understanding at the meeting as well?
Yes, it is that we were going to, the feasibility study would include, I believe the way it's worded, other, I believe the resolution is worded estimated cost made as proposed or in connection with some other improvements. So other improvements would be 20th Street, and that's where we needed to bring that up here. And we can add that on the resolution in the second, be it therefore resolved. Where it says other improvements, we will put 20th Street in there.
Okay.
Excuse me, Betty.
Yes.
Isn't 20th Street already paved? Aren't you just going to pave that?
No, isn't it, let's see, 8th, no, I'm sorry, not 20th Street. What is, hold on, let me look at my map here. Where's the map? It would be not 20th Street. It is, yes, 20th Street East in between 8th
And 9th.
And 9th.
Okay.
That section there is not paved.
Right.
So we were going to include that feasibility study in the event to loop because we did 8th last year. 9th is being requested, so all that whole section would be.
Okay.
To include 20th Street East.
So do we need to have an amendment to the motion, or are we good as we're setting with the resolution as presented?
You should probably add to the feasibility study to include 20th Street East.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to include on the feasibility study 20th Street East as an amendment to the original motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bower. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order, wouldn't we just amend the initial?
Well, we can.
As the presenter and the supporting party, couldn't we just amend the original motion rather than making a second motion?
You could.
Because we had a motion and a second on the table.
And voted, yeah.
And hadn't voted.
Right.
So we should, in all reality, just amend the initial motion.
That's what we're doing right now by.
Making a second motion.
No, amendment. It's amendment to the motion. No, amendment. It's amendment to the motion. So we have a uh amendment to the motion uh which would include Twentieth Street East to the initial amendment. Uh, this is not the final vote. This is just to add the amendment. Uh, Chair would entertain or Chair would call the question at this time.
Abstain since my name's on the petition?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. The motion carries four for the motion and one abstention. So now the original motion that we have is uh to have a or accepting the petition and ordering preparation of the feasibility study for Batumis pavement of Ninth Avenue East between Nineteenth Street East and Twentieth Street East and Twentieth Street East. Uh, Chair would call the question on that.
Yes.
Well, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four for the motion and one abstention. Ooh, that was a tough one. All right, next, consider purchasing a seventy-four-inch front uh flail motor and sixty-inch power angle sweeper with a water tank and spray bar. Chair would entertain a motion for uh that purchase.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Please.
Once again, I'm against spending money. Twenty-six, twenty-four thousand dollars is another big chunk of money. I won't go into the same details I did before, but because of our uh our predicament with our budget, I would say no. And I know that we're talking about what's been budgeted in the past and what's been budgeted in the future, but spending money just because we have it, I disagree with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second on the floor. Chair would call the question.
No.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries three for the motion and two against the motion. Uh, next is consider the logo for Industrial Avenue Water Tank. Um, they were in the uh here packet. The recommendation coming out of um the recommendation coming out of uh the Public Works was this, um, as for the size of the Icebox of the Nation, that is up to the the committee or the council, but it was kind of our thought, the bigger the better, so you can be able to see it. But uh with that being said, I'll leave it up for uh council discussion.
Mayor.
Yeah.
So the only difference is how bold the Icebox of the Nation is, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
See it from someplace.
Right.
I think the bigger the better.
I agree.
Well, and so just just some background story on the um on the water tower and the logo and stuff. Uh, not not even to be a long drawn out story, but one of the things is we had an opportunity when um when we are redoing this water tank to put on a logo and just as a off uh um when it came up in Public Works, I I put out on Facebook what people would think, and they came up with some really neat ideas. Um, everything from uh Icebox of the Nation, Gateway to Rainy Lake, uh painted purple and gold and put a Bronco on there, and uh all kinds of really, really good ideas. But Frostbite Falls. Yeah, and there was a lot of really good ideas, and the reality is is it really came down to the the most simplistic, easiest way of doing it and financially sound way of doing it was to just have text. And so therefore, we could have had Home of the Broncos, but if you put Home of the Broncos, then you're gonna have a really, really big purple uh water tank, and it we just kind of thought that that might stand out a little bit much in our community. And uh, you know, my personal thought on Gateway to Rainy Lake, for as much as I love that that really is part of who we are, is we are the entrance to Rainy Lake. Um, we don't have Rainy Lake in International Falls. Um, and we 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 are known as the Icebox of the Nation, and you know, whether whether we uh we all like that or or we all don't like it, it really is our claim to fame. I don't care where you go in the United States. If you say you're from International Falls, they're gonna be like, is it really that cold there? So um, we just found that this is uh, you know, a a little homage to who we are. We also found that when people do come to International Falls, since they already have it in the back of their mind that this is the Icebox of the Nation, that's gonna be the cherry on top when they come into the community and they see a big blue ice cube with uh Icebox in the Nation, International Falls on it. So um I do want to thank all of the people that had given their thoughts and their concerns on what we could do. We we could have put a big iceberg. In fact, at one point, they had an iceberg in there. Um, and we just said that it it that's a little bit too excessive for what we needed. Um, but I I want to thank uh all of the residents that put their thoughts in there and don't think that they fell on deaf ears just because we didn't take the idea that you had. We had really good discussion about all of those. Um, so again, before us, we have the the three, and it would be my my suggestion to take the largest print, which would be zero-six B three. But I would entertain a motion for any of the the three at this time.
Mayor.
I make motion for zero-six B three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, discussion.
Just to be the devil's advocate, are we gonna get a challenge from embarrassed Minnesota?
If they want to paint something on their water tower, I guess.
I can see what they can say. Hey, we're the Icebox.
Yeah, it's resolved in court. We're really cool.
That's the thing. We paid to get it resolved, and it was resolved, and.
Yeah, we hold the trademark.
And we are the Icebox.
We're sorry, not the trademark, the copyright.
All right, sounds great.
So we have a motion in the second uh for zero-six B three. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five for the motion, zero against it. Uh, any other business come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney, and Department Heads. City Administrators.
Yeah, Council, just an update that we are moving forward with the comp study. Um, you guys will be getting an email on Friday in regards to the status of what the employees are seeing, and then your copy of the questionnaire. Um, the city employees received stuff in their paychecks today in regards to moving forward with this process, and they did a random selection of employees, and we will be sending those um employees the questionnaire and going through this process really soon. Um, it's gonna be time intense, but it's something that um is gonna really give us a good outline and a good base of moving forward with where we are for compensation and our classification studies.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Can you give us a update on our H R safety director on when they will be arriving?
Yes, she will be arriving. She's actually gonna come in and sit with me tomorrow morning and we'll start looking at some paperwork, but her first official day will be Monday, the thirteenth.
Okay.
She is here in town. They are moved in and settled, kind of, she said, and so she's excited to get started on Monday morning. Yes.
And with with that being said, and I I know this is gonna come off wrong, but d- does she know what she's in for?
She's excited to join our team.
Excellent. All right. Um, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've got an updated report on the criminal cases in front of you. Been meeting with the Fire Marshal uh to uh review additional cases that we're gonna be pursuing uh in the near future. Uh, you know, there is one item that I I want to clarify, because I think there's been some confusion, and and it's been uh probably the property that's received the most publicity and attention from the council, uh and that involves Friends. Uh, and I think there's been, and the Friends family actually operates two businesses in our community. One is Friends Garbage, and one is Friends Recycling. And Friends Garbage has been around a lot longer, and and I think there may have been references by the council and perhaps even myself, and there's certainly there are no issues with Friends Garbage with regard to Blight uh and their business and everything else. Uh, the issues have been with regard to Friends Recycling. Uh, and uh we did have a meeting uh uh last week with staff and with Wade and Michelle Friend, and and I'm happy to report that there's been significant progress made, and they have made a recycling license application that's been determined to be denied, and we explained to them why it's being denied, because they hadn't met the different requirements. We spent an hour or more going through with them. Uh, and I think everybody understands, uh, they understand what's expected of them and what's needed in order to obtain the next the next licensing period will begin January first, and they run year to year. And so what we've explained to them uh is it's the recommendations of our staff and myself that as long as they're making progress and taking these steps uh this fall to uh correct the situation and and get uh eligible to have a licensing, recycling license ish license issued to them as of January first, uh we would uh continue working with them, and and both Kelly Myers and Jared Baldwin have been doing that, and we'll be keeping in close touch with probably weekly meetings and and reviews on that. Uh, also, they've made significant progress uh with regard to the uh what's viewed from the road on Highway fifty-three as people enter the community. Uh, and um, so I think that's all moving uh in the right direction. Uh, and I think that we're gonna end up having a good result. Uh, and I think part of issues in the past has been maybe poor communication and 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 I think from the city's standpoint, uh, we bear some responsibility in not communicating with them more clearly exactly what was required and when, uh, and I think now we're all on the same page. Uh, and I uh I'm confident that this issue is gonna be resolved. Uh, and um, that's that's the only I I have have relayed to Betty and and the mayor. Uh, what I think going forward at these council meetings, it's probably not the best place to be discussing individual property owners and their and their issues, because there there are so many. Yeah, and if we talk about one or two, uh, it's really not fair to those people, I don't think. So uh I I think uh most of the discussions are are best handled uh uh at a staff level and and through my office and through the Fire Marshal, uh, and uh um, so that's what uh I would suggest moving forward. Uh, but I think we're going in the right direction, and particularly with Friends Recycling. Uh, uh, I think they're now on track to do it correctly. Uh, and the city and the county are really dependent on having a recycling business in the community that does it right. Uh, and um, so it's really important that we all work together to do this correctly. Uh, and I think we're headed in that direction. That's all that I have.
One question, if I agree with you that we shouldn't be talking about here, but when progress is being made or something, can you or somebody notify the council how it's going? So we're informed on how it's going?
Certainly, uh, and uh, you know, probably, uh, you know, the Fire Marshal uh is on this almost daily, not only with all the different ones, uh, and uh Jared's doing the inspections and so forth, and and I think, you know, any of you uh council people could certainly uh, you know, appropriately, as part of your job, uh, talk with him, and if there are properties that you have concerns about, you should relay that to him, and and then uh he can keep you posted on what progress is being made or not made, uh, and if there are particular properties that uh you know, seem to slip through a crack, call that to our attention, my attention, Jared's attention, and and no, that's certainly appropriate, and and I think at committee meetings, uh, you know, individual properties would be appropriately talked about. Uh, and um, you know, it's none of it's a secret, but it's more a question of trying to be fair to everybody and not single out certain owners or people as being a bigger problem than others, uh, because it's a citywide problem, and you know, we probably, I mean, there are, you know, probably a hundred properties that are on the radar, uh, that Jared is talking to and working with and and letting them know ahead of time. Uh, and uh, you know, right now, we have still pending about fifteen criminal cases, and we have about twenty more that are about to go to that next step uh if they don't take action in the next couple of weeks. Uh, uh, so uh, we're dealing with them, and uh uh it's not being ignored, but I think given the fact that uh, and I know uh in the past, certain portions of this meeting, which are recorded, then are replayed in the media, uh, and if it's on the radio, but you know, a certain main business is a is an issue, it it really isn't fair. Uh, and so uh, and part of I take responsibility, uh, because because uh, you know, I'm the one they were recording, and and uh, and I I should handle it differently, and I feel badly uh that uh they received some negative publicity that they didn't deserve, particularly with regard to Friends Garbage, and and that's kind of a perception. I think a lot of people in the community don't realize that there's two different businesses, uh, and they're uh licensed separately and they're operated separately. Uh, they have common ownership, yeah, but they're separate businesses. Uh, and um, and Friends Garbage has been here for generations, uh, and has been a great business in the community, and and they went into the recycling business, you know, more recently uh and made the applications and did things, and and part of the reason it wasn't licensed and operating properly is that we didn't, we as a city, didn't do enough follow-up to work with them, uh, and then this problem developed, uh, and uh it became a real eyesore, an issue, and and uh we're dealing with it. Uh, but they are, I think, working hard and spending lots of money uh to try to fix the problem.
Well, Steve, I commend you for that. I am, I'm real happy to hear the route we're taking now. I think I think how you put it out, excellent, and and I think uh I'm real happy to hear that, because I've always been happy with their other business and and how they've held themselves to doing a good job, and and so what you're bringing up here, I really, I commend you for that. I I like that. Thanks. Yep.
Thank you. Anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay. Uh, any Department Heads or heads have anything to bring forward? Um, and I I would just want to add one more thing to the Blight Report, because I actually had uh had requested to discuss on that uh very issue about talking publicly about the the Blight Report. I I think the Blight Report makes more sense uh to have it at the Committee of the Whole or in one of the committees. I don't know which one, but Committee of the Whole makes the most sense, because then everybody's there. And the I guess where I get the the heartburn about the the Blight Report being at a council meeting isn't because it's not important. I mean, it it's very important, and it's on the forefront of what we're doing. I mean, we we essentially hired somebody to take care of that as part of their responsibilities. So I think that the city is taking it very seriously. Where I guess I I do have, uh, and I take I take some of the blame too, because I think I may have missmispoke uh multiple times on uh specifically that one issue. But but what bothers me the most about having the Blight Report here is we get the fire reports, we get the the police reports, but we don't talk about individuals that, you know, may have had a major drug bust on whatever street it was. We don't, we don't talk about that one, but that's probably more more detrimental to our community in some capacity than um than than the Blight. But I I I think that uh we we do get caught up quite a bit about what other people are doing, and and it ends up coming to this forum, and I I just want to it say to the community, it's definitely very important. It's on our radar. We are uh gonna continue to move forward with uh with um managing uh Blight and trying to to do a real fight on it, because I think we're one of the first councils that's ever do a real fight on it because I think we're one of the first councils that's ever really put our money where our mouth is legitimately and, uh, tried to, to fix some of the, the area, but this forum of having the discussions, because you go from talking about that house on Third Street or the house on Ninth Street. Next thing you know, well, it's next to so-and-so's house and then i- it just, this is not the forum for that. We don't, we don't need to, to go into it. So I, I just wanted to add to what, uh, what the city attorney had mentioned there. Um, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I did have a question about the correspondence and I know that that comes after.
Yep.
Will you be able to have a discussion about that?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Understood.
Sure. Um, anybody have anything for councils, committees or reports? I, uh, I just would like to, uh, inform you guys that, uh, I have had a conversation, um, in regards to, um, the comprehensive plan and the bridge. Uh, myself, um, the city administrator, uh, two of our county commissioners and, uh, multiple members of, uh, staff from the, the county along with, um, Minnesota Department of Transportation had a quick conversation, about an hour. And we just kind of discussed about the concerns that we have with, uh, with our comprehensive plan and how we go about, uh, moving forward to alleviate some of the congestion that we have downtown. Uh, when we have, uh, when we have backups, some of the other concerns that we have, um, I believe Counselor Kraus had even mentioned earlier today that there's, um, conversation going on about getting a new, uh, Border Patrol bu- building and customs, uh, um, there and there's, uh, truth to that. That is a hundred percent real. They are looking at building very soon. Uh, we are in conversation right now of trying to set up a, um, joint meeting along with, uh, our counterparts in, in Canada. Um, Minnesota Department of Transportation does, uh, see this as a viable, uh, possibility to um, move forward with, but with that being said, we're 10 years out if we were to do this. It's not going to be an overnight project and, uh, it's really at the will of, uh, the Canadian government because if they don't, if we don't have buy-in on their side or vice versa, it's a, it's a non-issue. So I have reached out to, uh, Mayor Cole. Um, I believe it's on their next council agenda to have that conversation. She has reached out to me with a list of, uh, her counterparts, uh, going up into the Canadian government to see if we can't have a meeting some point in November, which would be for, um, our elected officials over here. Uh, possibly from, from this board all the way up to, uh, the federal government. So, uh, we don't know how big it is, but we just came out of a training exercise that was going to be a pretty small deal. We had people all over the country here, so, um, things that happen in International Falls seem to get a lot of attention, especially when you're talking about the international border. So I just want to let you guys know that that, uh, conversation is moving forward. And I just had mentioned it, uh, before this meeting where we were just, um, chatting. Our comprehensive pa- plan is just getting knocked out. If you really look through our comprehensive plan on the things that we said we're going to do in the next 20 years, holy crap, we're knocking it out in like five. So there is a lot of stuff that we put in there that we wanted to see progress and see things moving forward. And, uh, we just got to keep focusing in on that document and then if, if we do this right, I mean, we, we're going to have a community that's going to be fantastic for the next 20, 30 years. We just have to keep chugging along and keep, uh, keep our community in place and big picture, it's like the police chief said, we're not having a hard time finding, uh, officers to, or to meet full with officers and I've seen Duluth is struggling something fierce right now. There's other cities and for whatever reason, right here on the Canadian border, um, we're getting some new hotels, we're getting new influx of people. We have some really, really good stuff happening up here right now and, uh, I'm just happy to be part of it and just, let's keep doing this. This is, we really have some good stuff in the works, guys. So I don't have anything else. We'll go to open, uh, forum. Is there anybody that, uh, would like to discuss on open forum? Hearing none, we will go to correspondence and Counselor Kraus wants to discuss something on correspondence.
Yeah, uh, in front of, in your package, you have the letter from, uh, Driver and Vehicle Services. I've received multiple calls from constituents and emails, um, actually going back to last year about the driver's license exam facility. Uh, I had a conversation with Representative Eklund about reopening our station. As of right now, there are 14 stations open out of the 93. It's the 14 core that they had kept open through the pandemic. Um, I don't know if anybody's aware of this or not, but in order to get a driver's license, and if you live here in International Falls, you have to travel to, I believe it's either Bemidji or Virginia to get, uh, to go and take your test. Uh, if you currently don't have a driver's license and you currently have no way to get there, you have no way of getting a driver's license to facilitate that, um. I know that as part of the transportation bill that was passed in July to avert a Minnesota government shutdown, uh, one of the stipulations for the Department of Public Safety was to get all of those facilities open as soon as possible. This letter is saying that that's going to happen July 31st, which is six months after the legislature said open them and that went into effect on Thursday, July 1st of 2021. So they've, they've thrown that back, um. One of the things on here is talking about how local governments can help. And I am wondering if we would like to direct the city administrator to perhaps get ahold of Tony Anderson at the state, who is the person that's overseeing this and see if there's any way that we can help, whether it be offering space or what do they need to get our driver's license exam station open? I know that Virginia sends the, the actual, um, license agents that ride along, but I do believe it was a local person that's hired to administer the written exams. And they're having a difficult time allegedly hiring people. There's, there's got to be something we can do to, to help facilitate this and as the mayor pointed out, we're doing fantastic things and I think that this feeds right along with that. And, uh, this could be a barrier to employment or other things. And I know all of our employers are looking for people. If you don't have a driver's license, how do you get there? So I don't, I don't know if there's anything that we can necessarily do, but it, I mean, they, there's a name. He's there. Uh, so if we could maybe get in contact with them and just see what we can do, it would, it'd be much appreciated. I know I, I, I have multiple constituents and I think I forwarded on some of the emails to Administrator Burkstrom that I've been receiving. So, and again, did talk to Representative Eklund, so I know he's aware and it, it's happening everywhere, but maybe if we can expedite the process, we can be not 93rd.
Oh, I, I would, I would accept a motion to draft a letter to, uh, um, Tony Anderson asking for, uh, um, us to be able to open up our thing and, and offer something to help, I mean.
Open a line of communication to find out what do they need.
Yep.
And he clearly states that there's things we can do, but he doesn't necessarily outline exactly what we can do, so let's get ahold of him and find out.
I make that motion.
Make a motion to, uh, to.
Get a letter drafted.
Okay.
To the Director of Operations.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I have a second, Dan.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. All right, uh, do you want to discuss the other one?
Do you want to discuss the other one?
All right, so we have a, a reminder, our next regular city council meeting is going to be Monday, September 20th, 2021 and 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.